And then they pull the rest up.
I wish we did that in the planning.
Oh, the agenda?
Well, we get the back one today.
Oh.
Now they'll have a laptop on this.
Well, she could.
Yeah, I'll talk to Roxanne about it.
Change it or just post it.
He'd like the laptop, do you?
In the back, it is out.
You like the laptop?
Oh, I just thought.
Yeah, it's just like my iPhone.
Okay.
Oh.
No, so I'm just taking the back.
You'll get your appointment now.
But for charity, finally.
So all they're doing with mine is just play game.
It don't have to be scrolling.
Well, that's what they want.
Okay, it's nine o'clock and I will call me and the Ben Golling Board of Commissioners to order and a little with the pledge allegiance place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under the individual liberty and justice. Okay, at this time, I think I remember the efficiency since I'm attending the meeting virtually, I will turn it over to Vice Chair, Commissioner Pesel.
Thanks, Ben. We'll call Vicki.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Commissioner Bowley?
Here.
Commissioner Berkeley?
Here.
Commissioner Pesel?
Here.
Commissioner Heinon?
Here.
Oops.
Here.
Okay. If we approve an amended agenda?
Couple things, Mr. Chair. So the item is titled State Funded Business Assistance Grants. Let's make that the last item under County Administrator at 9:12. The second item titled Schneider Geo-Spatial for Beacon Geographic Information Systems, that's Mike Harvey. If we could add that right before you recess for Human Services, so between Roxanne's item and then recessing for Human Services, Mike Harvey's item. And the other one you have actually is, that goes with Human Services, the third one. So those are the two items that we had.
Monty?
Yes, sir.
So Mike Harvey put this under consent? You want that under regular?
It shouldn't be. Yeah, we discussed it being a regular item. We typically don't, we try not to amend things onto the consent agenda. So, yeah. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair?
I'll second that.
Any discussion, all sitting by, I say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same, sign motion carried. Anybody sign up for open forum?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to consent agenda. Number one to approve was amend the special meeting minutes of November 30th of 2020. Number two, approve the amendment of regular minutes of December 1st, 2020. Number three, to accept and file Committee of the Whole minutes in November 20th. Number four, to approve the revisions of Central Minnesota Emergency Medical Services Joint Powers Agreement. And number five, to adopt the resolution and establish commitments of fund balances. And number six, to adopt the resolution delegating the authority to make electronic fund transfer payments. And number seven, a resolution setting aside net proceeds from tax forfeiture land sales to county parks. Number eight, annual approval of the County Emergency Operations Plan. And number nine, adopt the resolution accepting donation to the Sheriff's Office K-9 Fund from MJ Burnake Memorial Fund. And number 10, to approve the business assistance grant. And number 11, engagement letter from Clifton, Allen, Larson, Allen to complete required 1094-3, 1095-3 forms for the year 2020. And number 12, to approve tobacco license for Dollar General Store. Number 16, 244 Rice, Coyote Moon, Moon Grill Holiday Station Stores, and West Side Bicker. And number 13, to approve the amendment to the County Jail Food Service Contract with Summit Food Service LLC. Anyone want any of these pulled for discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And we'll need that roll call vote each time.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Berkeley?
Aye.
Commissioner Pesel?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
I think the dean is up. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, so I am here this morning. I just wanted to speak with the board regarding the truth and taxation meeting being rescheduled and the mailing of the proposed tax statements. So there has been a lot of comments and conversation made regarding the proposed tax statements not going out on time or not reaching some of the Benton County residents in a timely manner, and therefore the board was needing to reschedule the truth and taxation meeting due to that conflict. I thought it was a good idea for me to come before you this morning to give you some clarification and facts regarding the process, and hopefully that will give us all some more understanding of why some of those taxpayers did not receive their notices in time for that December 1st meeting. So there are several puzzle pieces that come into play in preparing those notices, those proposed tax notices. The first part of the process does begin in another office. So near the beginning of November, we did send an email to another office letting them know that we needed them to do their part of the process so that we could complete ours. Due to unforeseen circumstances, and that we're in the middle of a pandemic, there was a delay in us getting that information from the other office. It did take two weeks' time before we received what we needed. Again, this was not their fault. The pandemic has contributed to some unforeseen things that happened in that office. They got their data to us as quickly as they could, and therefore around November 18th, when we had the data to do our part of the job, it kind of put my office under the gun. Normally, our side of the process, we like to have at least a weekly time to do our end. We were given three short days. So in a rush of trying to get our part done and get it to the outsourcer, I had staff working until 10 o'clock at night to get our part of that process done and our file to the outsourcer in time for those statements to be mailed out by November 24th. So we submitted our file to the outsourcer, and from there, it's out of our control what happens on that end. They had the file in time. It is our understanding that the statements were mailed in time, and so I just wanted to clarify what happened. There is a lot of moving parts here. It wasn't all just a delay or an error on my office's part. The other component that I wanted to mention is at the same time every year, we mail those proposed statements out. Our mailing date never changes. We have to have them out to the taxpayers at the same time. The county board, however, sets the truth and taxation meeting every year. So my suggestion would be maybe going forward, consider scheduling your meeting maybe a little bit later in December and not right at the beginning of the month. That might be one option to avoid this from happening again. We had some other circumstances, right? This year, we're in the middle of a pandemic. The mail service has been much slower than normal. I'm sure that you've heard it from many people or have gotten delayed mail also on your end. So the pandemic hasn't helped the situation any, and then we threw a holiday in the middle of the mix. So we had a holiday in there as well at the same time that we were mailing those notices out. So all of those factors came into play, creating a delay for some of the taxpayers in receiving their proposed tax notices. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Nadine, do you know if any other counties, any problems?
Yep, there were, there was one other county that we received an email on. Heather, do you recall what county it was?
I think Sibley County.
Sibley County? So yeah, there were a couple of other counties that had the same issue that we did. There are many, many counties that use the same outsourcer that we do, and we have never had a problem with our outsourcer. We've been using them for three years. They are spot on. The delay was obviously on our end, and we put them under the gun as well. So that's, that's what happened, and that's why the notices were delayed for some of the taxpayers.
I hear everything you're saying. I know the holiday ended up, and then it was, you know, the very first day of December, which put it under the gun, but all those things were set quite a ways in advance, and between the outsourced and everybody in our end probably should have looked at the calendar maybe a little bit more and...
Yep, it's a group effort. It's a team.
Right, and got things rolling a little earlier.
That's right. And so looking at that, looking forward this year, you know, that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll work as a team on that.
And everybody knows that that mailing time right after Thanksgiving was really big this year, so that probably had a lot to do with it, too.
Yeah.
But it just looked like maybe, you know, from my standpoint, it maybe looked like an oversight on somebody not looking far enough ahead.
Um.
To see what needed to be done maybe a tad early.
Yeah. Well, I think the pandemic kind of caused some, some people to be out also.
Okay.
And so when you're short-staffed and somebody's not there to do their portion of the piece of the puzzle, that causes delays. When somebody else is picking up the ball and trying to fill those slots, it does take more time because maybe they're not as rehearsed or versed in the process. So, you know, that, that's another component to consider. So, so yes, there was a second mailing that went out on December 7th. So hopefully, we haven't received any calls on that, so assuming that the taxpayers have received their second notice, so.
So that was an extra cost, too, right?
Yes. Yep.
I think we'll just have to take this up in January when we set our meeting.
Correct.
And look at our calendar.
Look at, look at the calendar.
And work together on that.
Yeah, correct.
Yep, and I'll make sure I'm present.
Make sure your office brings us, makes us comply with it.
Yep, absolutely.
Timeframe.
Absolutely, thank you.
Troy, I think Troy's up.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have before you a contract with Mayo Medical, who is the major medical provider in the St. Cloud area. What I have for your consideration is a contract that is going to enable us to continue our relationship with Mayo Medical to have paramedics on our SWAT team. As I detailed in the agenda item, we have a joint SWAT team with the Stearns County Sheriff's Office. So we pool our resources and we respond to high-risk events in both counties. As part of that, we have included paramedics in that team for a number of years now. There's value in that, to have a paramedic right there on scene that is both available to help any officer that gets injured and any citizen that gets injured, and also to have those paramedics undergo some of the same training tactics that our SWAT operators undergo, so they're able to effectively get into some of these very difficult situations with us when it's, it's dangerous. We want to continue this relationship with Mayo Medical. Mayo Medical has approached us and let us know that they want to continue this as well, but they need to see some kind of reimbursement for the time that their paramedics are investing in this training. Mayo has committed to not charging us for the time the paramedics are actually with us out on the call-outs that they go on, but they're asking for some type of reimbursement for the training hours that they put in each year. So we brought this contract to get that down into writing. It's been through both the County Attorney's Office at Stearns and Benton County, and it's been already signed by the Stearns County Board, so I bring it to you today for your approval and signature.
And how long we had this, Troy?
We've had a joint SWAT team with Stearns County for, I think, probably 15 years now, and I believe the paramedics have been part of it for at least the last, I'd say, seven.
Any questions, anybody?
I guess my only question would be, is like, any other agencies, like Sauk Rapids Police Department, any of them involved, too?
Uh, no, right now, it's counties that are involved.
Just the counties, okay.
I believe Sauk Rapids City has a relationship with the City of St. Cloud SWAT team.
That's correct, yep.
In motion. Now, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the contract. You try to sign.
Second.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Berkeley?
Aye.
Commissioner Pesel?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thanks, Troy. Think at this time, we could conduct a public hearing to consider proposed changes to Benton County fee. We got, we got Roxanne on.
Let's see, I believe first, Mr. Chair, is, if we're moving into the fee schedule?
Yep.
Okay, yep. Did you, you got the script?
Yeah, Mr. Pesel, you have a script in front of you.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, before the public hearing, we were first here.
Any staff report? Okay, sure, yep. So let's see, the first, the first change would be auditor treasurer, and that begins page one and two. So we can just ask each of our departments to just give a very brief overview of your changes for the record. Thank you. So Nadine, pages one and two.
Yep, so I just have the two changes. The one change was just really a terminology change for escrowed bank accounts. Instead of saying we're going to charge $5 per parcel once a year annually, we're just going to change that to $250 twice a year. It makes more sense for my department to be billing those escrow fees to the escrow companies twice a year instead of annually. So there really isn't an increase there, just a change in how we're going to do our process twice a year instead of yearly. The second change that I had was an expedited permit fee of $50. We get a lot of people submitting permits for various things with, throughout the year, always last minute. We're always under the gun. We're having to track some of the commissioners down to get them to sign off on something, or we're having to make contact with the attorney of the sheriff's office if they're required to sign off. So really, the expedited, $50 expedited fee is a fee that we'll charge if it is a very last-minute permit, encouraging those people to apply sooner for the permits that they're requesting. So those are my only two proposed changes to the fee schedule for 2021. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Roxanne, is page seven. There, she's here, in person.
Good morning, Commissioners. The request that I have is actually not a new fee. It's just adding it to the fee schedule to make sure that the public is aware of a new policy, which I'll present to you after this, during my items. And that's a $200 fee for new construction that will be deducted from the overall building permit fee once they pay for that. So we're just asking that $200 be paid upfront for the review of new home construction. It'll then be taken off of the building permit.
Thank you.
And Mr. Harvey, it's page nine and 10.
I'll be brief. We had a change to our archival search fee, which is a, one of them will be a complex search, the other will be a simple. The language was standardized. One fee is 10, the other's 15. It just gives us a little bit of flexibility when people ask for us to perform in-depth search for them that they could do on their own. The second change was a marriage amendment fee, and that is just a statutory change on a recorder side.
Thanks, Mike.
And, Mr. Chair, the final changes are pages 12 and 13. Chris Bird could not be here this morning. Of course, you did hear from him yesterday, and just for the record, I'll, I guess I'll go over the ones that he had. He proposed increasing the mailbox post swingaway cost from 25 to 75. I think he said that was based upon their cost to fabricate the cost of materials and fabrication for those posts? And then all, if I recall correctly, the fees on engineer review for plat review, surveyors' fee for preliminary plat review, and surveyor's fee for final plat review were based upon cost increases. If I recall correctly, he said the surveyor's cost is simply a pass-through. We have a contracted surveyor, and that's the cost that that company is charging us for that service. And that's all we have, Mr. Chair, in terms of fee schedule changes. For you.
All right. Yeah, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If there are anyone in the audience who wish to address the county board on the item, so please come to the podium, give their name and address. Anybody want to address on the fee schedules? It's a final call. Anyone wishing to address the county board, nay or pro, on the county fee program? See, none, the public hearing is now closed. Are there any emails, Monty, or?
No, sir.
Okay. Department of Concern, the state agencies? Monty, any state?
No, sir, no, sir, no.
Okay, the county board, and I'll have time to questions to staff for discussion. And as a reminder, the audience, the public hearing is closed, and if there are any questions, comments, the board members, before we take action on the end item. None? If not, we need a...
I move we approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'll signify. Whoop, we got to take, we'll call.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Mr. Bowley?
Aye.
Mr. Berkeley?
Aye.
Commissioner Pesel?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Who's got the, who's got the next one?
I do, Mr. Chair, but we have Peter Klein. I see Peter is with us via go-to meeting, and Peter's with the St. Paul, excuse me, St. Paul Port Authority. I see Peter as my client. So I, Peter, if you're with us, I'm just going to turn it over to you to address this item for our county board.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me, taking this on. But we did receive a request from Merrill, one of your larger employers, or larger buildings up there. And they're, they went through a expansion, and now they're looking to place solar on their, the roof of the facility. And this actual solar installation is going to be 700 KW, so it's a very large one. And they have requested P's Property says clean energy to finance this solar array. So we're looking for a special assessment, please special assessment of $1,675,000 to be placed on this property at the request of the property owner. And open to any questions.
Anybody got any questions? No? No, Peter? Where is this now, Monty? I don't even know where this is.
It's over in, it's over in Sartell. Just recently did a substantial expansion right there along, that would be shot 29.
Oh, okay.
So it's on your left, as you head across the bridge.
Okay.
Yep, yep, so.
All right, we need a motion. Prove a special assessment.
So move. Second.
Any other discussion? If not, we need roll call.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mr. Berkeley?
Aye.
Commissioner Pesel?
Aye.
Mr. Heinon?
Aye.
This is motion accepted. Motion accepted?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
I know.
Okay, Monty, elected officials.
All righty, yes, it is, all right. So, Mr. Chair, it's a statutory duty of the county board to set the salaries of our elected officials. That'd be the sheriff, the auditor treasurer, and the county attorney. This course of issue was discussed yesterday in Committee of the Whole, and I believe a consensus was reached as to the salaries of those folks. And I need to go actually grab some. Okay, let's make a switch. Let's see, you just bear with me for just a second. I'm going to share my screen so folks at home can see this. I'm going to switch to this. Okay, here we go. Great. So again, the first resolution would be the same, the salaries for the auditor treasurer, county attorney, and sheriff. And basically on the consensus yesterday, these would be the salaries for those, those folks. Let me have to zoom here, zoom out. There we go, you see it everywhere. The consensus, as I understood it, was a 3% adjustment for each of those selected officials, and then you can see the dollar amounts. Of course, the, your resolutions were blank because we didn't know what those were when we prepared this agenda for you, so. Those are the amounts, again, that was apparently the consensus from yesterday. And Vicki has prepared revised resolution for chair signature.
Spence, it's a ghost. It's a ghost.
Motion to...
Probably Spence.
And I'm struggling.
We need a motion to...
So anyways, it's for your discussion now, Mr. Chair, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you have that up on the screen? It's something I have here, I'm not seeing.
That was my intention, yes, to share my screen. Let's go back.
I know, somehow I ended up, I got just this partial screen here, my picture and the board's picture, but I don't have the other one and...
Sure. Yeah, that may be more an issue, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Berkeley, you at home, as you can, you can resize your screen so you can see more of the content.
Yeah, that's good. How do I do that? Yeah, that's... I'm not sure we know how to do that. I'm not sure I don't, so.
So what I hope you're seeing right now is my spreadsheet, which shows those dollar amounts and...
I know, I'm not...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry you're having that issue, so.
Yeah, I somehow I got half the screen.
Monty, we have some?
Have a, go-to meeting, have a great meeting. Trying to...
It looks like...
What's that?
I agree, that's, it's some type of go-to meeting where you have to plug into this or click on this to be able to get into go-to meeting. So I'm stuck there, too.
Who is that?
So what do I have to do?
Who is that voice? Was that Bob Cornelius?
Yes, sir, Bob.
Oh, it's 3%, I guess. Spence, you can do the math.
Yeah. And if...
Yeah, there we go. There we go.
I'm just bringing this back to our normal go-to meeting screen, so.
Yeah, there we go. I don't, I don't have your screen, I don't have the screen, I'm going to see it, but...
Does Spence need, does Spence, do you need to know the figures and the complete dollar amount?
I could certainly recite.
I don't know, I know what we did this...
I could certainly recite them for the record.
You know what they are, Spence?
No.
Okay. Monty?
Sure, for the record, then, if again, I understood the consensus for auditor treasurer was 100, 264, sheriff 118, 178, and a county attorney 127, 447. Again, that represents a 3% increase for all three of those positions. Again, that represents a three percent increase for all three of those positions.
I need a motion for.
Well, I think, Mr. Chair, we discussed it at pretty full length yesterday, so.
We can have a motion for discussion.
Oh, we need a motion for discussion?
Yeah, in a second.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second the sal, the motion for the salary increase, three percent.
Any more discussion on that?
Well, I was just going to say we had a lengthy discussion yesterday, and I know it's not what they, what they proposed, and we're kind of in a, maybe a little bit of a bind here with where we should be and where we, you know, where we want to go, but I think it looked like what we could do this year and maybe do things a little differently next year is what's my proposal, so.
That's, that isn't, that is our intent.
Right.
Spence, can you hear that?
I hear, I only got a partial screen here.
No, that's all right. You want, you want to make any comments?
I don't.
Okay. We got a, we got a motion in a second, and we need a roll call.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Mr. Bowerly?
Aye.
Mr. Berkeley?
Aye.
Mr. Pesel?
Aye.
Mr. Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carried. No, we need to set the commissioner's salaries.
Yes, sir, so there's also, of course, discussion about that yesterday, and I believe the consensus was the two percent adjustment for our commissioners. And you see that dollar amount up on the screen, thirty-seven sixty-five, again, a two percent adjustment over current.
Okay, we need a motion.
Motion to approve the set salary schedule for the commissioners.
I'll second it.
Discussion? If not, I'll signify by roll call.
Mr. Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Berkeley?
Aye.
Mr. Pesel? Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Set the board per diem?
Yes, sir, so again, the discussion yesterday, I believe the consensus was to keep the per diem at the current sixty dollars per meeting that board members eligible for, for boards and commissions that they attend on behalf of the county.
Motion.
I move we approve. I'll second it.
Discussion? If not, we need a roll call.
Mr. Pop?
Aye.
Mr. Bowerly?
Aye.
Mr. Berkeley?
Aye.
Mr. Pesel?
Aye.
Mr. Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we need a.
Mr. Chair, is there somebody get this off, the go-to meeting off the screen, I got just Monty a little bit up there. Is that on my end, or should I just log in again, or what?
So, Mr. Chair, maybe, Commissioner Berkeley, maybe you can describe for me what you're seeing right now?
Well, I'm seeing up in the upper right-hand corner, I just have, it says, I see Monty and the board, and the rest of the screen's filled up with have a great meeting. If I log in, names work from anywhere, products, go-to meeting.
Monty, if I may, this is Roxanne. I think you need to stop sharing the screen in order to get that off, so that it's just the board that will be viewed.
Well, I mean, is that on my end, or is that on your end?
On Monty's end.
Okay.
Stop sharing screen, okay. All righty, then I'll stop sharing. Obviously, then, we lose the opportunity for, for aiming remotely to see what's going on, on the screen. Okay, I can do that.
Let's try it once, see what happens. I don't, it hasn't changed anything. Yeah, there we go.
Okay, so will this avoid sharing the screen that's?
No, no, if I hit mine up here, you can see me talking?
Yes, sir, we can't see you on video, but we, we see, we see a square that's got you, and you see your mics on.
Okay.
Okay.
What are you going to get?
The camera's off, though.
Okay, I'll turn the camera off.
Very eventful, actually.
Moving on.
Yeah, I don't know, to work on that share screen business. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, for, I don't think we'd need to share screen at this point anymore because that was the only thing earlier that was not in your packet. Everything else is in your packet. That special spreadsheet, elected official salaries, of course, wasn't in your packet because it was discussed yesterday. All right. So, I am going to put this up, though, for folks here, at least in the boardroom, to see. So I'm going to switch to our visual presenter. I believe the next item is the, the final report on CARES funding.
Right.
Yeah. So again, this, this is in your packet, and I want to acknowledge, this was prepared by Jackie Trott in our office, and just before I get into it, I want to just certainly thank Jackie, in particular, and Amber, for all their work these last several months, tracking these CARES expenditures. Behind all these numbers is a tremendous amount of work. For example, every two weeks, they would send out payroll reports to about a hundred employees, asking them to put on that, how much time they spent on pandemic response, sign it, send it in, they had all to be recorded. So a lot of work went into this. Jackie did the monthly reporting that we were required to do to the state. Just did an excellent job of keeping on top of everything, great accuracy and quality and so on, so I want to make sure I mention that. So, again, these are the categories, essentially, the ones the board approved. So you may recall, we brought to you all, I think, on about three or four different occasions, CARES funding plans to approve, and this reflects what, what you all approved. And basically, the bottom line is, we found, we definitely found a way to expend or allocate and use all the resources that were sent to Benton County. You may recall, our original number was about four point nine million. We received about a hundred and fourteen thousand of resources back from townships, which went into our pool, which then in turn, the board reallocated back out. As I recall correctly, most of that additional money from townships went out to grants to businesses. So just if I may, highlight a few things that are on this list that, that, how the county used these resources. For example, at the top of the list, the high-speed scanner that was, became very important to the, the thousands of absentee ballots that came in, the fingerprint facility and the sheriff's office, so folks don't have to go back into security area of the jail to get fingerprinted for various purposes. Audiovisual equipment, so all of our conference rooms have now had substantial upgrades in their, in their technology, so we can do remote means in the future. So it was a great investment in the future, this room included. We upgraded the audio system to help so folks get a better audio experience when they're participating either remotely or through the live streaming. So that was another great investment. You'll see that as well. Just jumping on down a few things, the beacon permitting, that was a project that Roxanne brought to you, so that folks can apply remotely for a building permit, or a driver permit and so on, and she's working to get that implemented sometime next year. Mass vaccination, you may have seen that we had allocated thirty-eight thousand, but only spent about seven. And it wasn't that anything was missed, or we didn't make any deadlines. I, I checked with Nicole Ruoff in public health to, to understand what happened there, and it sounds like there was some shifting in planning. What really happened, it sounds like, is that more of the logistics and distribution vaccine won't be occurring at local pub, through local public health departments, but instead more originally, so we didn't mean to acquire some of the equipment we originally planned to acquire. So I just want to make sure you, you mentioned that, it wasn't that something was missed or, or something wasn't done, it was a deliberate change in how the state intended to distribute vacs, vaccines. The business assistance grants, you can see one point one million dollars went out the door in business assistance grants. Ultimately, it was about twenty-two percent of what Benton County received. You may recall, there was a, I think, desire, legislative desire, that counties would send at least ten percent of their monies out to businesses. Ultimately, Benton County went with about twenty-two percent. You can see the next few items, the monies went to schools, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand or so went to, between Foley Schools, South Rapid Schools, and St. John's Area Schools, mostly for technology, for help kids that are, that are doing distance learning, remodeling the courtroom. This is Judge Ralph's courtroom, was, some conference rooms are taken out so they could have better distancing and have jury trials there. Hundred thousand went to career solutions for assistance individuals, and then, as we mentioned earlier, monies went out to nonprofits. Hundred seventeen thousand went out to about sixteen nonprofits that serve Benton County residents. And then the last, one of the last items, the largest, is the two point nine man, so this, I mentioned this earlier, where Amber and Jackie sent out these payroll reports every two weeks. So, for example, folks in the jail, sheriff's office, human services, and elsewhere, they put on their, what percent of their time they, they spent on pandemic response, and those numbers turned into this two point nine million. So this is, we, we talked about this a little bit yesterday, these are the resources that we're retaining internally to the county, and they're going to help us a lot over the next two years, help stabilize county finances, and hopefully respond to any cuts in state assistance that we're probably going to see when the state has to balance its budget next time around. And lastly, was the, the, of course, very important is the PPE, so the hand sanitizer, the sanitizing services from service minister, the front desk security, the Plexiglas, all of these things went into that last number. So when we filed our final report on December ninth, that Jackie did for us, it did show that we spent all the resources that we did receive. So there may be a few final adjustments. We understand that Catholic Charities was not able to spend all of its resources, they're going to return some of that to us, and I did get a call from a township a couple days ago that said, we, I thought the deadline to return the money was January fifteenth. And I said it was like November tenth or something. So there's going to be a small check coming back from a township, and so there'd probably be a few small adjustments to this final, final report, and Jackie tells me that we do have an opportunity to submit a revised final report, so.
Mr. Chair.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so, Monty, with this money coming back to us, do you have an idea of where you want to use that?
Well, the, the, the small amounts that come back from Catholic charities and so on, here's what I think we'll do, is, so if you kind of think of this report right here in front of you, we'll lower the Catholic charities number, and we'll increase the payroll number, because we didn't claim all of payroll, we could have. You may, when we did this a long time ago, this whole plan, we were estimating what our payroll costs would be. It came in pretty close, but actually, we've got a few hundred thousand of, of excess payroll expenses we can still claim, so we'll just lower Catholic charities, increase payroll, and then that, the bottom line is still zero. So, yeah, it worked out fine. Okay, any other questions, thoughts about CARES?
Mr. Chair, I just think everybody did a good job getting this out on time, and a lot of extra effort by everybody, so.
Yeah, I think, I think I saw Amanda was listening in, too, and then obviously, huge thanks to Amanda.
Right.
For managing that, what a job that was, and, and, and I saw the evidence of her work, the documentation, it was excellent. So, yeah, great job to Amanda on that.
Good job, Amanda.
It was great that they took that over for us.
Let's see. Oh, we have one more to talk about.
Do we, is that just, we don't need a motion for that, or not?
No, sir, it's just information.
All right.
So the last item we added is, so the legislature has approved a state-funded business assistance program, and I think you've got the amended agenda in front of you. I got this yesterday. So it looks like there's about eight hundred and seven thousand dollars headed our way for business assistance grants, and some of that can be retained for administration, about twenty thousand can be retained for administration. I just saw more guidance this morning as to how these monies can be used, but I should back up a little bit. So the way I understand this is the state identified, I think it's kind of two, two buckets of money. The state's going to distribute money itself directly to bars, and restaurants, and theaters, and gyms, I believe, and that's going to be going out really soon. And then they gave a bucket of money to counties to distribute themselves to, it could be some of those same businesses, or other businesses. And I also understand, too, is that the county resources can also go to nonprofits as well. One thing I, I saw from some guidance from AMC this morning is that the criteria, I'm sorry, we don't need to look to, for, for example, what seemed to start all this was the most recent executive order which closed bars and restaurants. What I saw from AMC, though, is that basically, you can look at any pandemic impact, not just the one created by this most recent executive order. So it sounds like the intent behind the county money, it's very broad, it's very flexible. It doesn't need to be, for example, just a bar that just had to close because of the executive order. So my, I've been communicating with, with, with Amanda about this issue. She's going to talk to the BEP board this week about whether BEP wishes to administer this new pot of money. My suggestion is that she will come to see the board on January fifth and discuss what parameters do you all want to follow to get this money out the door? What, so between then and then, I guess, I guess there's some time to think about some ideas for you all as to parameters, like a minimum, a maximum, who would qualify, who wouldn't, and so on, stuff like that. So at some point, I think the board should consider and adopt some parameters. Can you remember how we did that with the original CARES funding? Kind of same thing. Adopt some parameters, then BEP goes to work, gets the money out the door, so.
So the eight hundred and seven thousand, that's just for Benton County, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's besides what they're going to send out directly?
That's in addition to the state, the state dollars that are going out, yes. That is in addition to, right?
Mr. Chair, Monty, with all the new information coming, I'm sure we'll get some more this afternoon, and probably tomorrow.
Yeah.
Does this go under the same criterias of the existing businesses that we've already given funds to?
The way I understand the guidance, again, it's very preliminary, is that, is that you can give money to a business you've already given money to.
Okay.
So you can also give money to a business that's going to get money from the state pool, so for example, a bar, a restaurant, you can also give them some of this money, too. You know, my, the way, as I've been following this, this commentary about this, this county money, it seems like, is, it's sort of like a catch-all, so if, if the state money misses a business, well, then the county money can, can help fill that gap. So maybe there's some businesses out there that were impacted that don't qualify for the state money, well, then the county can step in. And I also saw some commentary, too, from, why are counties getting money? And I think because people recognize that counties did a really good job of getting this money out to businesses that needed it, especially to, I think, more maybe perhaps in some of the, some of the counties, they, they, they were able to sort of connect with some businesses that historically are hard to reach, that maybe will be reluctant to apply for this kind of funding. So, again, the reception, the counties did a really good job of that, so it was, again, it sounds like it was sort of helping fill a gap.
Mr. Chair, so Benton County's got a lot of apartments. Would it, human services be able to help with people behind on rent to get through this pandemic?
I think what I've seen from this so far, the answer there would be no. This needs to go to a business, and a business must be located in Benton County. That's one of the little things that's different. You may remember the nonprofit, if you serve county residents, that is okay, but in this instance, you must have a physical presence in Benton County.
But what if it's apartment, Benton County, the landlord isn't, isn't getting paid? So then, you know, you keep him from.
Yeah, you know, I, I think probably the landlord, the landlord itself may qualify, but not the individuals, right? Yeah. So again, from what I've seen, it's, 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 did you suffer an economic impact from the pandemic, not just this most recent executive order? So, you know, I think, again, this is an issue, help, Amanda can hopefully help us out, if she studies the guidance and we look at it, and help you all formulate some parameters.
Mr. Chair, will we know how much the bars and restaurants are going to receive from the state? Do you think?
You know, I, I have that on my phone with the latest, let's see here, from AMC. Let's see here, what I got. Let's see, what have I got here? Okay, here we go. So, here's how it works with this, this, this state money. If you have zero to twenty employees, fifteen thousand.
Okay.
Twenty-one to a hundred employees, twenty-five thousand.
Kind of same parameter.
A hundred and one to three hundred employees, thirty-five thousand, so it just moves up in tiers based upon the number of employees, fifteen thousand, then twenty-five, and then thirty-five. So, will that be enough to get them through? Who knows? So, again, the county money could be a supplement to that, or it could be to entirely different group of businesses that you choose to send it to.
And do we have a timeline on this?
Yes, it's got to be out the door by the middle of March.
Okay.
Got to be out the door. Got to be out the door.
So, it's something for some of our new board members to think about too, right?
Yes, sir.
So, I got one more question. So, you already contacted Amanda and she's already looking into the process if they can handle it with BEP?
So, anytime I've gotten these AMC updates, I've sent them to Amanda. And I asked her if she could discuss it with her BEP board Thursday, just to confirm, are they comfortable administering this on Benton County's behalf? And I apologize for asking you, are you comfortable BEP administering this? I made the enormous assumption you would be. That's true.
They, they've done such a great job in the first round.
After the job they did the last time.
That's Amanda's punishment for doing such a great job.
Mr. Chair, that 2.5% isn't a lot, so maybe you can get some help. The county could do some of the work and 2.5% is not a lot to administer that 800,000 dollars, but.
Yeah, if you, if you were listening or watching some of the stuff that came through AMC and MICA was, that was one of the comments that, you know, our county's not interested in 2.5%.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
For the administrative part.
And what I understand, this is, is all very hasty discussions, negotiations, and that's where it landed. So, seems like one of the good things though is you see lots of flexibility in how this money can be spent. And they're describing it as minimal auditing requirement. So, this isn't federal money.
No.
There is, this isn't federal money, so there won't be any federal single audit of it. So, that kind of helps a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, just to wrap up then, I'll ask Amanda to be on the board's January 5th agenda to discuss with you all possible parameters and so on. And we probably will have a new agreement between the county and BEP. You may remember we had an agreement before.
Right.
Probably a new agreement for BEP to administer this for the county. So, that's all him.
When do we, Mike, when is Mike on? Mike, is he next?
Roxanne is.
Oh, when do we get Mike on?
Pro line services.
Oh. Roxanne.
Guess we're getting behind schedule on me.
All right. All right, the first item is a resolution creating a policy to require a portion of the building permit fee to be paid upfront. And I think we've discussed this quite a few times now. But that's that $200 upfront fee for single, not single, new home construction. And I did write in, within this policy, a refund policy as well that goes back to the refund policy we created back in 2018. Basically, that $200 is to cover the cost of our building inspector reviewing these plans. If he has not reviewed the plans by the time that they want to pull their building permit, as in they don't want to do it anymore, we'll refund that 200. But if we've gone through the review process, they're essentially forfeiting that $200 for staff time spent reviewing it. They can approach the board if they feel that that was wrongly.
Yes. So, Roxanne, how many applications through the year do you have to where they back out?
Very few, but they do happen.
And we're really not increasing the fee at all? We're just putting it up front maybe a little bit?
Right.
Okay.
Right, and there, I, I did do my research and checked with other counties and jurisdictions. There are a number of them that require the full permit fee upfront. There's a few of them that are considering doing as we are. Sherburne County, we actually, at the same time, we're thinking the same process. So, I believe Sherburne County is moving to this as well, but it's not uncommon.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll take a rule call.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowerly?
Aye.
Mr. Berkeley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peschel?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, go ahead.
All right, the next one is the consideration of the contract service agreement, excuse me, extension with David Barzoti. As was requested of staff, we did go out for a request for proposals on building inspection services. I did publish it in the paper and I did send out seven separate invitations to the nearest inspectors. Needless to say, there's, there's not very many local companies or people that do building inspections to this capacity. So, a number of them were from the metro area. We did receive three bids. One of them, of course, was David Barzoti and the other two were Minspec and Inspektron, both out of the cities. We reviewed those bids and held inspections with all three of the companies. And ultimately, the, the committee that was reviewing those and holding the, the interviews was myself, Monty, and then Commissioner Peschel. And one of the firms we felt was very business-like, whereas they would take the application, it would go through one person in their office and the next person in their office, and then it would be assigned to a building inspector and back out the door. It just didn't seem very personal. On the level of price, everybody was relatively the same. And by price, we mean the percentage of what they would take from the building permit. We, as the county, set those prices, but within the contract is the percentage that each company would take from that. Everybody was relatively on the same level. Ultimately, through our discussions, we'd like to recommend, moving forward with a one-year contract with David Barzoti's company, Inspection Services of Central Minnesota, I would like the ability to work with David and work with the board and try to bring any comments to my attention so that we can create, if there are issues, we can create a log of that issues and address them head-on versus not knowing what the issues are. And if they're in fact personality-related, customer service-related, or if they're building code-related in, in this mindset that we can't do anything about what is actually written in state law. So, the request is to move forward with a one-year extension with David, monitor how his operations are with the public, and then bring this back for discussion around September, which would give us time if we needed to go out for another RFP or reconsider another extension.
Just, just to comment on the, the other two that we did not accept. The one office didn't have anyone close here, they'd had to come onto many offices. He, if we would have chose them, they would have, they would have to, would have had to hire somebody and put an office in St. Cloud or someplace or whatever. Very professional though, and I, I got to give them credit. They, they were right on the ball with everything. The other one is, was kind of an older firm and we figured if, this is a longstanding commitment with the firm, you know, they were, they were getting up there in age and we figured that was, they did, they could do the job, but they were getting, you know. It was kind of a, a two-person company that was. And then with David, yeah, he lives close. We did have some comments about how he handled himself, but like Roxanne said, we, he's kind of on a one-year deal. So, if anybody has got any comments or anything, make sure they let Roxanne know if they got any problems.
Right, I, I think that's a really good, open way to do this because, you know, otherwise it's, you know, I get the comment, I tell you, you know, when we're having a meeting or something. This way we can make sure we get it to you right away so we, we have a little more openness. And maybe, maybe it'll make that person a little more aware of what he's, when he's out there too, that these comments are coming back.
Absolutely, and I do, excuse me, I have a template for a comment card that I'm going to start sending out with all building permits with my direct contact information, letting them, letting them know that if there are issues, the only way to make changes is to contact me and let me know.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you, that was the next comment I was going to ask.
So, I guess we need a motion for a one-year contract.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Not all signified by rule call?
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Berkeley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peschel?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne. I think we got Mike up.
Mike's up.
Morning again, gentlemen.
Morning, Mike.
Morning.
Do you guys have the Beacon contract in front of you?
Yeah.
That's just a three-year extension, no price changes, no price increases. This is our geographic information services provider. They host our pictometry imagery. It has our tax estimator through that portal. And it's how most of your citizens are looking up property information throughout the county. So, it's possible we go with another provider in the future, but right now, they're providing a good service that's simple to use. And it looks like there is some options for expansion where we have needs. So, that's what we got for now. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I think they do a good job, but I think it's money well invested. So, with that, I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? If not, will signified by rule call?
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Berkeley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peschel?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Could I make one more comment? Is that okay?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
As we're looking at a new camera and tax system and other issues, this is one that'll probably come up later on too. Because as you implement one thing, there may be other things that work better with it. So, just keep an open mind. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we got to reset for the, conduct the Human Services meeting. Now, we got 19, oh, yeah. I've called the Human Services Board to order approval of the agenda. Is there anything else, Bob?
No, no addition.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
We need a rule call?
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Berkeley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peschel?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Consent agenda to approve the regular minutes on November 17th. I need a motion.
I agree with that, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? If not, we need a rule call.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowerly?
Aye.
Mr. Berkeley? Mr. Peschel?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Bob, we have COVID-19 vaccination planning grant agreement?
Morning Commissioners, yes, I just got one I am. And by the way, that item, we received it Friday, the 4th. It needed to be on the agenda by the 8th, approved and so forth. And we're going to talk about it the 15th. So, as usual, the Department of Health gave us very little time to do this. But the item is request to review and approve the COVID-19 vaccine planning grant between the Department of Health and Benton County Human Services. And just to say, no, we're planning on meeting sometime this week to get started with this. But this is a $24,000 pot of money that is going to be earmarked to facilitate the vaccine distribution in our county. Any questions?
Who's going to do that, Bob?
Yeah.
We do have a 19-page plan that Nicole and Sam put together and Julie. And what that amounts to is, is most of the nursing homes and the hospital are going to do their own vaccinations. So, it really boils down to, we're probably going to do our own, but I think more is to be determined. And that's why we're going to meet later this week to start trying to figure out how we're going to get the, our county members and the actual local public health people, the, the people that we are charged with, how we're going to get those done. So, more to come on that.
Okay. We need a motion on that, Bob?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Chair, move that.
Go ahead, Spence. I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Rule call.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Berkeley?
Aye.
Mr. Peschel?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Motion carried. We're, we're going to lose a public health lady, Bob?
Yes, sir, we are, unfortunately.
When, when will that be?
The 21st of December, so a week from, well, next Monday, I, actually, it's next Monday, the 21st.
I guess I would like to, as board chair, I'd like to thank for all her, all she's done in the last, what? How long has she been here, Bob?
Actually, I think she was six months longer than I am, so eight and a half years.
Eight and a half years, I want to thank, thank Nicole for her work. It was very much appreciated.
I agree with that, yes.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
So, speaking of that, if you don't mind, I'd like to say one, one more piece of, I would like to congratulate the three board members who are moving on for, and I wanted to highlight the fact that through a partnership with Human Services, with Monty and with the board, the board has set the expectation and Human Services has met that expectation that we only go before the board for documented needs and have a physically sound proposal. And through the course of my eight years here, I've only been turned down for one item through that whole course of time. And maybe that was a pie in the sky process through, working through St. Cloud to make St. Cloud better. And oh, by the way, that is actually happening right now through the communities of excellence. So, I wanted to thank the board for the U3 members and that. I'd also want to mention that Commissioner Bowerly, Commissioner Peschel and Commissioner Berkeley, thank you, gentlemen, for your time of service. And I also wanted to mention Commissioner Peschel for your years of service on public health matters. We appreciate that much. And for Commissioner Berkeley, all the years you spent on the community mental health initiative and all the mental health programs that you've been tied to. And also for all those questions that you asked me to keep me prepared. I wanted to thank you, gentlemen, for your service and wish you well.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Spence, do you have any questions for me?
No, not, not today.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, we'll adjourn and go back to the regular board meeting. And Commissioner Updates. Anybody want to start? I just had one, that was last Friday. Well, we all, we always, most of us were with AMC, right? Most of us were on there last Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
And we had a Shack meeting, quarterly meeting last Friday from 9:00 to 11:00. Virtual, Harden Mattson from Candyaw County, he was our chairman. He, he's retiring as commissioner and he was the chairman of the Shack, Shack board down there. So, we got Gail from, can't remember where she was from. And then Tara Clark from Stearns County, she's our vice chair. Pretty much that was it, except for Chris, Department of Health, no, Jan Malcolm. She gave a report on, on the vaccine and how that was going to be laid out. I guess all the healthcare workers are first, like everybody figured they was. And then the essential workers, they got a, they had an A, B, and C. And the, and the health workers and the, and the nursing home people were A and B, were the essential workers, and C were all the rest by sometime in June, they hope, you know. That was the majority of the meeting. Everybody said goodbye, you know, and everybody else is saying goodbye. There was quite a few of them that retired. Deb Byrne from the, she's retiring too, so a lot of retirees.
I had two meetings and like always, I'll let Spence talk about one because he truly enjoys speaking. I was at RSVP meeting, we picked a new chair, vice chair, new secretary, adopted some new bylaws and basically scheduled meetings for next year. Homework, that's it. And career solution, but Spence, are you ready?
Ah, yeah, there wasn't much there. Was, was that for you, Steve?
Yes, yeah.
Go ahead, Spence.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll take career solution. There really wasn't anything, it was a lot of cleanup work. End of the year, Steve, you got to help me on this one. Didn't they say? Didn't they say something on one of the updates? It was how many people were served at Electro Lux, was it? I looked on three hundred and forty-five families, or what was it?
Three fifty-one.
Okay. Three hundred and fifty-one families that were served?
I believe so, yes.
Worked at Electro, Electro, okay, okay. I couldn't read my reading, but I, I love that pretty close. And they were all, those were the sterns in Benton County. That were all for that, so that was pretty good. We just, and mostly items they said were just end of the year, then they had to increase, just like mostly agency, health insurance costs went up. So the employer now had to increase the contribution, forty-five or fifty-five dollars a month. Or no, uh, yeah, what was it? Fifty-five dollars a month per employee. And now it's up to eight seventy-five a month that the agency contributes to their health insurance and per employee. And they do put in some for Viva and HSA is only forty-five dollars a month. So, you know, they, they too were having trouble finding a, a career and thinking of looking into a whole bunch of different things. It'll be, it'll be hard because that's getting to be a real, really big issue. I think that's all I had. There's an annual meeting coming up this February, definitely everybody's excited about. And I think even the outgoing board members are probably going to be invited. Well, myself will be invited to that also, so.
Spence, do you want to give a little bit on MICA too?
Well, yeah, I can.
Okay. As long as, as long as this is your last regular meeting, have at it.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, you know, a lot of, most of the stuff that we did there was just, again, the policy platform reviews. And then most likely doing AMC, in fact, a lot of them do AMC. And so, so, and that's why AMC and MICA work very closely together. Do a lot of joint ventures together. And they, and I, I know there's one thing that came out that they made mention it was that state representatives are now limited to only introducing twenty-five bills per representative. The age was one that introduced a couple hundred last year. So they're not going to have time to mess around with that many. So they better be pretty, pretty high priority things. And they, they, you know, the, the counties and Department of Human Services retreat that they have, was trying to come up with suggestions for, you know, Human Services. And they, you know, they were talking about waivers and keeping flexibility key. And they, and they wanted to develop some kind of a tool or programs to see if they should even get into them in the first place. And that was kind of interesting. It was one thing that came out of that, so. And I think the only other thing I pulled out of it was they are going to be getting a new member to MICA too. And Sisago County has expressed interest to join. So there'll be one more company and of course that will reduce the amount of, for each county to run the organization, so. And then we, I got the MCIT, that's Minnesota County Intergovernmental Trust. That's the insurance company for all, all the counties. They write all your property, casualty and workers comp, all, all those things. And maybe once a year at the annual meeting, I was, I'm like, tell them that. So I had, I attended that meeting on the eleventh. And they have an unmodified opinion and fund balance. Everything's good there. Their fund balance is up a little bit. But the directive report pointed out some very challenging issues, you know. That the reinsurance for waste to energy operations, man, elusive, was her words. And they only had one bid, and that was incredible, and that was up sixteen percent. So I don't know where, where that's going to go. But it, it, it's a real concern and it really only had one claim, I think, in all the years. And, but, but that claim was very, very, twenty, they had one claim, but that, that was very high, a very high payout, so. And property casualty rates were up, you know, usually was up twelve percent. And the workers comp, you know, that was a calculated reduction, we do, we can reduce it, they say. But they almost had COVID claim really jumped in them. They only had, they had no deaths reported to them from COVID, you know, due hospitalization. But they did find out that older deputies are having a longer recovery time, you know, than the younger ones. And I gave the example, one county staff, they had one time, the sheriff said, one time rather though, entire staff was quarantined, so that was, that must have been a big deal. And then we elected Jack Swanson, I think we know him from Roswell, was elected to be a new board member on, on there. They also gave out the annual awards they usually give out at AMC meeting. And the first, the Clearwater County got the workplace injury award for the workers comp. And property casualty award went to our neighbors here, Meager County. And the standard of excellence in risk management and hospital late coming. And let's see, and so some of the questions for the future, they had to try and find any alternatives for waste to energy markets that, you know, that, they just don't want to underrate that. And this is, this is the same in other states, not unique to ours. So I don't know what's going to happen there, like I said before. And on the cyber risk, there's greatly likely to underrate any of those. And they're looking at trying to find other companies to do it. They're actually thinking of self-insuring or something. So they're experiencing the same problems that I always have on that. So I think that concludes my report from here.
All right, thanks, Spence. Mr. Chair, I'd just like to mention one more thing is that at the end of the MICA meeting, they presented, we have three people that are leading the MICA board. And Spencer was one of them and they presented him with an award and thanked him for his, all his years of service and dedication of going to the MICA meetings. I think it was Spencer, Jake Gillen and Randy Maluska?
Maluska.
Maluska?
Maluska.
Maluska? So.
Okay, anybody else?
I can go next. I had a tri-county solid waste, we had a strategic planning kind of retreat, virtual. So we're going to finish that up here next Friday, this Friday. But what three items I'm kind of pushing is egg plastics recycling. We're still not, you know, our goal should be is get a hundred percent egg plastics recycling. The institutional food waste, that should not be, it seems silly to me that we're hauling food waste from St. Cloud to Alexandria and trying to burn it when food is, food is eighty percent water. And the third issue I was trying, I'm trying to push is truck traffic. Now, like in the road that I live on, there's a township paved road and they, they have garbage truck for regular service. And then they have recycle. And then they have two or three different carriers. So we could have, you know, in a two-week cycle, we could have six different trucks going down that road. And everybody knows, but the spring of the year, road distractions, garbage trucks can't meet, can't meet the requirements. So they get a special dispensation from the state. So we're beating our roads apart for nothing. We should, if we could have, you know, we talked about having townships be able to let their garbage out to one provider. I guess the state does, law doesn't allow that. Cities can do it, but townships and counties can't. So that's made some legislative issue we can hopefully get changed. But so we quit beating our roads up with all these garbage trucks for those. So whoever's going to be on the tri-county solid waste next year, I think those are three pretty important issues for Benton County.
On the, on the garbage deal, and when I was on the town board, we actually formed a committee and got going to have one because of the reasons you said. And we got a letter from the state attorney general that we were not in our jurisdiction to do that.
Thank you.
And it, what happened was the garbage companies, they sent, as soon as we sent the garbage companies letters that we were going out for bids, they got the attorney general to say, we can't do that, so.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, that, that's kind of bull crap.
So that's, that's the law, we got to get changed.
Right, I, I think if they see the process of how it works in the cities, you know, then they can understand that the process can work out in the county.
Don't cities do this, do that?
Yeah.
Cities are crap, so I helped initiated that.
Yeah.
Got a lot of negative feedback at first.
Yeah.
But in, in to what you were just saying, my back alley had eight trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A week.
The only, the only good part I see on it is, on my road, there's like three or four different carriers that go by. And so my garbage bill went up and I was stuck into the people that they have. And I told them I wanted my bill lowered back to where it was and then some. And she said, well, we'll have to get back to you. And I said, well, two trucks just went north and they're going to come in south in a little bit. If you're not back to me by that time, I'm switching. And by God, they got back to me. Yeah, and we got it lowered, so.
But it would lower costs for the providers, too. You know, in one truck, it's just all those additional driving for nothing. It's hurting the environment, it's hurting roads, it's just a waste.
The only other thing other than I had with Spence is that on the seventh in the morning, I've been attending the AMC state boards as vice chair of environment and natural resource. And they, they have now canceled legislative forum that's due in February just because they have to, they didn't want to let them out of their contract. And one of the workers down there went and met with them and we got, they got, they got out of the contract for that part of it. And they're going to have to decide on the one in Grandview shortly here because otherwise they're hung with a big fee for that. And, and they did, you know, their finances weren't all that, you know, they used some reserve money and some of that. So if, you know, if they don't do things like that, the county's portion to belong to AMC is going to start going up. And then we had MICA and Spencer, they did say what, that they got an invitation to one county and one other county is, had some inquiries, but they've had two new commissioners and they want to wait till the two new commissioners get on before they extend an invitation to that one. So. And they did. Yeah, and they did expand the executive committee by one. And they, they used to have a secretary of treasurer and they broke that in two. And now they got a treasurer and Terrell Clark from Stearns County got on the executive board, so.
That it? Okay. Commissioner Concerns? I, I just have one, you know, I, we got an email from Chris about sales tax.
Yeah.
And I would like the, the new board coming on, we're weak, we're kind of above what we predicted, you know? And we kind of talked about this yesterday a little bit. Maybe the new board, they, you know, we got a bridge over on fifty. So we've got more than enough to do with the extra sales tax money to, to put that bridge in. Because we know we're not going to get enough funding for all the bridges. So we might as well bite the dust and do one, one when we can, so.
I pass it along to Chris.
Yeah, okay.
I, I would second that motion, yeah. And I, I was doing the math last night and we're averaging over two hundred, two hundred and seven thousand dollars a month in the last thirteen months. And, you know, we were supposed to get 1.9 million over. So we're, you know, the, the average looks like it's quite a bit higher than we anticipated. So, and that could change, but you know, like.
There's certain months that are lower than others, but.
Yeah, but the average.
Old is over, so.
So I think that's a good idea, Warren, that we look at that.
I, I'd have to agree. And I know Chris is going to check into that too.
Well, some, the new board to keep on.
Yeah.
Keeping the, um, we need to set a committee of all?
Well, we just have one, it's ways out. January twenty-first is the MICA. Annual meeting, it's being done virtually by Zoom, January twenty-first from three to six. So we'll register folks and then, and get you the virtual meeting information. So that's obviously this isn't their normal annual meeting, which is onsite on January twenty-first, three to six. That's all we had.
All right, motion, motion to.
Motion to accept committee of all.
Second?
Second.
Rule call.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Berkeley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peschall?
Aye.
Mr. Heinan?
Aye.
Motion carried. Monty?
Well, I wanted to take the next two hours to recognize our board members. That going to work with your schedules? So I'm going to start, I'm, so we get to embarrass the heck out of you. So I'm going to start and then whoever else wants to talk can talk. And we want to leave Dwayne Walter for the end though. He's the cleanup hitter.
He's our two-hour speaker.
You all right with that?
I got nothing going, man.
So I just want to, if I could say a few things, if, and I appreciate your patience. I want to recognize our board members for a few things here. Let's see here. Shut this off, okay. All right, okay, so today we're going to recognize our three board members for their final county, regular county board meeting. I should note this, these folks that are leaving, it's combined thirty-eight years of experience on the county board. And I, you know, the effect of that loss, we really can't understate. I think you all sitting here know how complex and varied the work of county government is. It does take quite a while to kind of get up to speed on it. So that's a pretty big deal for us, losing that experience. So you know that under these roofs, there's a lot of stuff going on, from human services to roads to criminal justice and so on. A lot of things happen under this roof. I just wanted to say a few things specifically about, about each board member. First Commissioner Bowley, who's leaving us with eight years of service on the county board. I think one of the greatest assets Commissioner Bowley brought to us is his business experience. Both, of course, you're in the construction industry and now the ag industry. That was a huge asset to us over these past eight years and we really appreciate it. I know we often heard Commissioner Bowley talk about the data, let's see the data. And, you know, being me, kind of a number geek, that was a big thing because it's nice to see people make decisions based upon data and not emotions and not knee-jerk reactions. So I really appreciated that insistence on, let's see the data. And I know we spent a lot of time digging out the data for Commissioner Bowley. We're always glad to do that. One thing I really wanted to pay special compliment to Commissioner Bowley on was his role in helping creating the BEP. I know, I remember all those formation meetings we had here that led up to creating BEP. He was here from the start. He's, of course, served on the BEP board. And I know he spent a ton of time out there, pounding the pavement, recruiting business members to be on the, be, be members of BEP. So again, thank you very much for your role in creating BEP. I think my thought is, I think we're going to look back a few years from now and say, BEP was one of the best things that Benton County did. So again, thank you very much, Commissioner Bowley, for your service. Commissioner Peschall, who leaves us with twelve years of service. I, this, I had to say this. So my, I think my best memory of Commissioner Peschall is, you know, how deeply connected you are to Benton County. And Vicki and I often say this, that Commissioner Peschall either is, either knows or is related to everyone in Benton County. And we're not kidding, we're not kidding. So I've always appreciated Commissioner Peschall's very common sense approach to getting things done. And he often says, you know, what can we do to make county government work for people? And that's what we're here for, right, is to make it work for people. So very common sensual. I mean, especially I want to acknowledge Commissioner Peschall's involvement in our land use over these past twelve years. I, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've been on our planning commission for most of that time, right? And of course, then you had a substantial role in the comp plan revision, which we do about once every ten years. So again, a very substantial role in our land use over these past twelve years. And I think one thing too, and this is maybe a more recent thing, is I really appreciate Commissioner Peschall's urging us to get, get busy on ditch cleaning. You know, our ditches sat dormant for many, many years. And Commissioner Peschall's been a strong advocate for, let's get this going. Let's get these ditches cleaned, let's keep them maintained. So I think that's a, a great thing. I, I think, and I think one thing Commissioner Peschall reminds us is that our ag, our ag community or farmers is the foundation of Benton County. So again, thank you, we wish you all in your, in your retirement. Commissioner Berkeley, who has eighteen years of service on the county board. So many of you folks know, of course, Commissioner Berkeley served on the county board back in the late eighties, early nineties for six years. And I guess he was part of redistricting then. So he would have served a two-year term back in that period of time, a four-year, then a two-year to give him eighteen years. So here's what I think of when I think of Commissioner Berkeley. I really appreciate his disciplined approach to county government. He says, let's adopt good policies and then let's stick with them, let's follow them. And we adopted them for a reason, so let's stick with. He says, let's adopt good policies and then let's stick with them. Let's follow them. And we adopted them for a reason, so let's stick with them. One trait that really stands out for for me for Commissioner Berkeley is his desire to treat everyone equally and fairly. I think that's a really important thing for him. It definitely impresses me. One thing I think, and I think you all shared this goal when you joined this board, was to get the county tax rate down. And in the in the twelve years that Commissioner Barley, excuse me, Berkeley has been on our board, we brought our tax rate down about twenty percentage points. That's a significant accomplishment. It took discipline and leadership to get there. Uh, so again, congratulations to Commissioner Berkeley for that. Happy retirement, and I should just say lots of happy and safe pheasant hunting.
Ben?
Okay, uh, just one last comment. So I just want to wrap up and say I I admire your willingness to serve on the county board. Uh, we know you don't do it for the fame and the glory. You, we know you don't do it for the praise, because there is much praise that comes along with it, right? I I, I I think you step up and you ran, you ran for county government because you care deeply about get about Benton County, and that's really what counts at the end of the day. And I think when you all look back on your years of service, you're gonna say to yourselves, you know, I think we did some good things here. So again, best wishes to you and your family, and thank you very much. So who wants to go next? Anybody? Anybody? Anybody?
Well.
Okay, we'll let board members go.
Okay, um, I just. I just wanted to say thanks to the board members that are going out, the three commissioners that are leaving us. Uh, first, it's been, it's been a pleasure and um pride to serve with you people. I learned a lot in six years, let me tell you. I mean, um, second, when I look back, a lot of the progress that Benton County made. Everything, everything we did and everything we tried, I think we tried to make Benton County a better place to live, a better place to work, and a and a place to have some fun. Uh, when when um, we do that, I think everything else kind of falls into place. One of the things that I I um always remember when my first month or so on the board was that we had a goal setting committee down at uh Jack and Jim's in Duell. You know, I've been here probably six month or six weeks at the max. I think it was in February. Kind of sat there and like, oh, boy, you know, didn't realize we had all these things on the agenda and everything that we had to do. And I believe Commissioner Bowery was chair and we were getting towards the end of the deal and he, he says, okay, so what what's on your agenda? You know, I I really didn't have an agenda other than what I heard when I was out there campaigning. And one of those, one of those things was that we need better roads, we need uh lower taxes, and we need an economic development deal. And that was kind of the day when we decided we were gonna move forward with our economic development package. And uh, so that was, that was kind of where we went. And I I thank you for, you know, kind of breaking the ice there and and asking them questions because you really are, for the first, you know, fierce few months, you're really like getting amazed. I mean, I had no idea, um, just coming from the township, that you had this wide variety of subjects that you have to deal with every time. So and I think Benton County thanks you, and I personally thank you for um being not only a great board member, but created some great friendships. And Spencer, I always will look at pheasants a whole lot different since being with you. And I especially enjoyed Spencer, um, our trips down to MICA for the first five years. You know, we haven't had one in a whole year. Um, we had a lot of conversation, a lot of good conversation, you know. Yeah, you know, both about the county board and and about things. I I remember one meeting in particular, we were on the way back and Commissioner McMahon called you and you were discussing some hire or something and Spencer said, wait, 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 we we can't do this because Commissioner Pop's in the car. We would have broke the open meeting law, yeah. And so, you know, there were the things that you you don't take, you know, you don't take for granted over the course of the years. But I thank all of you for the time and the effort and the friendships that I created on this board in the past six years. And look forward to moving forward with new board members to make, you know, to continue the progress in Benton County that we have for the last what, twelve to eighteen years? So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. I left all my paperwork at home like I normally do. So I do thank all three of you, too, but I'm gonna take each one of you guys individually. And I'm gonna start with Jake, because everybody said Jake and I would not get along when I was on this board. And, you know, funny thing happened, we did. We we worked very well together, and I appreciated that, Jake. You're the numbers guy, you know, whenever Monte was saying something, you're on the computer, you're on your phone. Pretty soon you got all those numbers. And it's like, whoa, wait a minute here. Transportation, you know, you've been in the family business your whole life with roads and everything. That is something I personally am gonna truly miss. I don't understand, you know, I don't know the asphalt, don't know the roads. Uh, it was very, just just a lot of information to try to re- retain. But I don't know if I'll be able to retain all of it anyway, you know. But I do know that we will be giving you a call on some of these issues, you know, so so thank you very much, sir. Spence, everyone likes Spence, right? You know, so when Spence finally let it out that he wasn't running, everybody in Sauk Rapids goes, man, why is he not running? How long has he been there? And I'm going, well, forever. Well, when did he start? And I'm going, well, I think he told me he was either forty one or nineteen forty one when you started, Spence. I told him, I didn't, I didn't quite remember, but I think I remembered the forty one part, right?
Yes, correct.
Uh, thank you for the first six months of my medical issues I had. You were my chauffeur driving me around. I appreciate that, going to all kinds of meetings. And the long conversations, you know? You really like to talk and and you're very thorough. And sometimes up here, we'd be at meetings together, and I almost thought I was at that same meeting when you were giving your report. And it's like, I was just at that meeting, but you're very thorough. And I've always appreciated that and always appreciated your comments, your input. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Peschel. Well, we all knew Warren a long time. Me as a kid growing up playing softball against you. I remember the first day, our first meeting, Mr. Peschel walks through the door, gives me his little smile or smirk, comes up, puts his hand on my shoulder and says, Steve, you better behave, because you're sitting next to me. And I thought, what do you mean by that? Well, there was a time he had to put me in my place. So I kind of understood then what he meant. But I appreciate all of your comments. You know, we've had a lot of side conversations. You you just kind of hold things back for a minute or two, shake your head and and then just let it out, you know? And and I appreciated that. So I want to thank you, too, sir.
Thank you. Spence, you want to say something?
Uh, yeah, I hope it was you two also. But uh, yeah, who would, whoever would have thought that my last meeting would be done virtually? I didn't even know such thing existed when I got on the board last time. I'd never heard of Zoom, virtual meetings. Wow, even, you know, I guess this shows that even a little tech will be challenged by, figure somebody's name, but. You know, as I look back on the last twelve years, you know, we we started, Warren and I started together in there during the Great Recession, Obama, a Great Recession, and we had era funding. Remember that? And that lasted several years where we had all that out the door. And then now it's ending with the pandemic and paracris funding, and we're still going through that, so. But, you know, in in between, you know, we had some those years, we had some slow steady growth, but things seemed to be pretty good, pretty normal in there for a while. And uh, you know, I notice some things that always said many times, you got new commissioners, especially. We go to a lot of meetings, they're gonna be sitting a lot, and they really feed you good at these meetings. So if you don't watch it, uh, you can, you know, the scout I always said is good for three to five pounds a year. Yeah. In fact, I have a really proof of that, I lose about thirty pounds. And also in the, in the last four years, I went to three sets of hearing aids.
Well, if you wouldn't keep losing them.
You know, you're a lot of listening, so you can do wear out thoroughly. And then, uh, you know, some of the, I look at some of the complications you made, and they've already mentioned a lot of it, but the slow steady reduction in tax rates, and that's made it, made us much more competitive with our neighboring counties. You know, I I used to hear from the local state community of my business about the, whether the confiscatory tax rates on this side of the dirt and all the slowing development and growth, people not wanting to move in here. I don't hear those comments. Much more competitive and uh uh, I I, and that really is gonna help us, help us in the future. And that feeds into the budget process we have. And we've got really good, sound policy and discipline built into the budget so that we'll be able to maintain that that competitive balance. Also along these lines, the same thing has already been mentioned, but I'd like to thank Jake for that. Coming up with the ideas of that economic partnership. We needed something. And we tried a bunch of different things, and uh, this was his brainchild, and I think it's the one of the better accomplishments we've had here, that that will position our economy well in the future for economic uh activity, keeping the businesses available and expansion possible, maybe along with that. And, you know, we also been, came up with a steady funding source for a little bit. You know, not usually for raising taxes, but I saw the data on the sales tax data, but with about a third actually came from residents from outside the county, and we were already paying that and every other thing. So if we made the decision. And uh, that also kept the, sort of opened up some levy dollars for us also. And some of the other accomplishments we had, I have to say that it was the largest rule project we ever had in the history of the county was the owner block corridor. We had in Sauk Rapids from Highway ten up toward the new high school, and that was our partnership with the county, city Sauk Rapids, and the school district, too. And then a couple of years later, we had the up the hill project, and uh somehow Chris found a way to do all those things without even having to use any levy money. And I thought, sure, we would, but he got all some grants and and then and also we kept that off the levy. So I I think those are some of the accomplishments that we that we had over here to stick out in mind. But I just want to comment, you know, this is a, this is the greatest elected position you can possibly get. You know, you want to have what are in do is really is come to three in order to get something, you know, uh, you don't have to play the partisan role. You get things done. Um, and that's why you're seeing so many state representatives and state senators now giving up that position and running for county boards. And I always thought when I seen that, they finally figured out moves up to the county board. And uh, you know, this is a business, you you can never get bored. Just look at any agenda, and you're not really interested in a certain subject that comes up this way, the subject matter will change. And stability still rules at the meetings, and it's always, all of us, Mr. Dave Silver, that always actively utmost stability at meetings and always respected each other. And all of us, as I know, we made, we made friends over there, I would continue to make friends. And all have the same goals, mind your things in the future. And and I look at some challenges in the future, uh, we don't know where this with the new commissioner, we don't really know where this pandemic and what its lasting effects are going to be. And that's, that could be a challenge. But I also think it'll challenge us nationwide. That's a, that's a pressure to expand government of all of it. We've had this discussion many times. I know Commissioner Bowery has aggressive concerns over the U.S. on the two of, you know, whenever we had, I heard somebody knew. But that that's just a matter of fact, that's happening all over. And along with that comes some unstable funding for state federal elements as those expansions occur. And I always go back and compare to what it was when Commissioner Walter, I think somebody said he was there, he and I were on the board together. Uh, what our standing levels were and what they are today is unbelievable. And uh, I think a lot of our problems are gonna be, our challenges are gonna be huge. When we got on, four years ago, I don't think we've heard of homelessness. That was not an issue. Now, now it's getting to be quite a large issue again. The, the scientists presented some challenges over there with us. A lot of students are on free and reduce lunches, that's gonna be, that's gonna be. One of the challenges that we can all relate to here is that, you know, our aging population is getting up there. Well, they're gonna have to rely on some more services. And uh, the seniors right now outnumber the school age children. So, and so, and you know, next year, just I'm, or just on the last year, there's gonna be a bunch of other challenges that we can't even think of today. That's just the way this business is. But uh, I I just wanted to ask, are there any of the new board members or any of the veterans?
No.
No? Okay, I I think this is gonna be a change. Uh, I I think this is gonna be the first time in since I can remember, since I've been around, that there will be no veterans on the coming quarter. And uh, you know, each year at the annual conference, all the veterans are recognized at the banquet and they play your service song. And of course, in years, and everybody scans up and veterans and uh, then when they play anchors away, I would stand up along with all my other Navy front uh veterans, and all the members would stand up. And I remember going to those when the uh, in the eighties and nineties, over half the room would stand up. You know, and I started this time, we had a big share of the people, we're still probably a third of the people stand up that were veterans. And then the last time we went, last year, I don't think we had twenty veterans stand up. So that shows you the aging of veterans, and that probably do a lot to a community of veterans, of course, are probably not doing any more service on the government, but the Vietnam vet era veterans, like myself, are are retiring. And uh, but also I have a another tradition going on. We have another new commissioner that's from Sauk Rapids Fire Department. And that's a tradition now that we had for quite, quite a while. I mean, Earl Cuskey was the first one that came on. He was my captain on the fire department, and and Abe Young, who was the fire chief, was the commissioner I replaced when I came on. And now we have Commissioner Lett, Pizzi coming on, so that's four people. Uh, people from Sauk Rapids Fire Department, that's, that's a pretty good tradition, I think. The closing on say it's been a great experience, you know, the not many people get the opportunity to do something like this. That's been, it's it's been one of the oldest of Benton County. He was really great just to work with all the dedicated staff and fellow commissioners. And I I know in the future, I can see that, you know, Benton County's been well served well into the future. So I just want to thank all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Spence.
So my turn.
Well, whatever, go ahead.
Well, first I'll start with Spence. Thank you, Spence. Uh, working with you has been fun and and uh, I always enjoy your stories and and all the meetings we have two together and stuff, so thank you for all you contributed over the years and and um, remember Joe Wallack was on the board, the first, when I first got on, he was chair and he helped me get orientated uh quite a bit, so I, you know, publicly thank him as well, but Ed, you've been a great, great advocate for the county, and you came through the township, so you know the, know the ropes and and that really helped. Um, because you understand their perspective and stuff, and you bring a lot to the county and and you're gonna be a great leader for years to come, and I really appreciate your service and and your service in BEP as well. Warren, you and I go way back from, um, he actually drove a truck for my dad back in the day. So, so we, I've known Warren a long time and his school board service and he's been serving in the community for an awful long time. And uh, Steve, the same way, as city city council. I knew Steve's dad pretty well, too. We worked at a station after he retired. Sheet rock business, and I knew his dad is a great, great man as well. And uh, so it's been a great, great time and I um And so it's been a great, great time, and I, when you best miss time and something, it's hard to not get emotional about it. It's been a great experience, and I want to thank the staff too. Monte, you're a great leader, and you helped us out. And Kiki, Vicki's actually a good friend of my wife, goes way back to high school, and so I found out her nickname is Kiki, so thank you. I first got on this board, I was used to having administrative assistant to help steer me, and so when I first got on the board, she kind of helped. Texted me, Jake, skip the meeting this morning, make sure you get there. So thank you for that. And staff, I think the county's got a lot of great staff, and you'll be in good hands. The new board too is going to be a good board, so thank you.
And Monte was kind of right because, you know, I know a lot of people. My wife's side, there was twelve kids, and there were eleven on our side. So, and most of them live in Benton County, so... And most of them live in my district, to be honest with you, so that was good. When I first got on the board, I had some big shoes to fill. I went and talked to Dwayne before I got on the board, so he spent a lot of years on the board, so he gave me a lot of advice that was good. I'd like to thank Monte, and just one thing with Monte I'd like to say. I went down to the AMC convention, I got down to the hotel, and here I tried to check in. I had a billfold, so they wouldn't let me check into my room without a billfold. So then I got on the phone, and I tried to call Spence because he was there ready to use his driver's license or something so I could check into my room. Well, I got ahold of Spence, and then in the meantime, I had called Monte. He wasn't down there yet, so he had to stop at my house and pick up my billfold and bring it down. You remember that, Monte?
I do now.
So anyway, Monte is kind of my, without Monte here, I think I'd have been lost. I owe a lot of my experience to Monte because he kept me informed a lot. And department heads, they're all, they're so professional, and they're all so good. They know what they're doing, so I'm not going to be as long-winded as Spence is, but I want to thank every, Benton County because they did a lot for me, and I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Anyone else? Dwayne J?
Anybody else?
Okay, your turn.
How you doing, Spence?
I'm doing good, Dwayne.
Good, good to see you. Anyway, for the record, I know how this works, so Dwayne J. Walter, seven six six five, Ronaby Road Northeast, Foley, Minnesota, five six three two nine. I stopped yesterday, and I saw you guys were in there, and I stopped, and I didn't know it was a ditch meeting. But I talked to Monte a little bit, and I called him back there, and I said, I'd like to get on the agenda tomorrow if I should be under public forum or not. He said, just come in around ten, ten-thirty, so... And as Monte knows, and as Spence knows, because I worked with Spence for a while, and Vicki knows this, it was perfect because I'm not big on protocol, never have been, never will be. So that worked out really good. I'm here for mainly, the main reason is to thank you, five gentlemen, for what you did with our veterans memorial. Because as I told you when we started this thing, that had been something talked about for fifteen, twenty years, and it's finally become reality. I've got to thank you here from the Legion, give that to Monte, or give it to Chairman if that's all right. And as you've noticed, we're making progress out there. We got the flags, we've got the monument. We're waiting, we got two statues, we're waiting for two more statues. Hopefully, they'll be here within a couple of weeks. And then we'll have Ralph Caffey go out there, and we'll put the statues out there too. Then that's pretty well done, that part of it. If you, I'm sure you guys would know that Foley's going to put a walkway in, scheduled for next year along Highway twenty-three. I'll come back to the new board, probably, because we want to run a sidewalk from the walkway that the county's going to put in our city, from that walkway up to the memorial. So you'll have access from both the parking lot and then from the walkway. But I'll be at the new county board, and I'll make a presentation to them then. Hopefully, they'll go along with it. The second thing is I got a Christmas card for you guys also. And I think there's still some kind of a policy where you can't give anything worth more than five bucks to these people?
Pretty much.
Something like that, some authentic old crap or something like that.
Policy.
But anyway, I got these pins. They're from the Foley American Legion. So if anybody asks you, these suckers are worth four ninety-nine, four dollars ninety-nine cents. And I got seven of them, so Vicki, you deserve one too.
Thank you, Dwayne.
I think I got them.
Thank you.
Remember, untouched by human hand.
Thank you, Dwayne. Thank you, Dwayne.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you.
So again, I've been on that side of the bench, and I know like Spence said, a couple of you paper reference, it's kind of a thankless job. You don't get a lot of praise from anybody. It's mainly the calls that are, you know, my road is bad, or taxes are too high, whatever. You guys have been through it. So I just got to thank you from my personal perspective. Thank you for what you did, for what you're going to do in the future. I wish you all well, I wish you a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you want to do, Happy Holidays. But have a great future, all of you. And I'll tell you this, maybe we're all different, I know, but when I left there after, whatever, twenty-eight years, thirty years, whatever it was, I thought, oh, my God, what am I going to do? What am I going to do? And I'll tell you, it took me about two months, and after that, life was fantastic. I didn't think about meetings, I don't want to be on any boards, don't ask me for input. I'm just living my life and enjoying every damn day. Hope you guys all do the same thing. And thank you for your comment, Warnie, because I did talk to you a little bit before, you know?
Well, thanks, Dwayne, and for the veterans for what you did. You did a lot of pushing out to get that done, and this board, and I know Spence especially, thanks for all you did for Benton County.
Yeah, and the thing is, you know, you can look back in the future when we're all gone, hopefully that memorial will still be there. Granted, it hangs around for a long time. And they can say, the county board at that time were you individuals. You were the guys that gave us the land and got it done. And I know it's on a ten-year renewable thing, and it's never sitting here in ten years. None of us might not be here, but it's ever sitting there. I hope they renew that sucker in perpetuity, and it continues on. So here's your Christmas card too, I forgot to give it to you.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacob and the, would like to take pictures of our board members that are...
Okay.
Yep, yep, if you could, yep.
Thanks, Dwayne.
I did present the ceremony on the clock. There you go. There you go, sir. Jacob, where would you like folks to stand?
I think right in front of the, I think right in front here. Oh, good.
Thank you.
Do we need our mask?
Box. You don't look a little masked anyway.
And Commissioner Berkeley, we'll get your clock to you somehow. I'll chop it off.
And then maybe just, yeah, that's good, right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. Yep.
All righty.
Okay, Monte, we need, we need a motion to go on closed session.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Roll call, Ricky.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowery?
Aye.
Commissioner Berkeley?
Aye.
Mr. Peschel?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
I'd like to invite our new folks to stay. I really think they should. So you're welcome to stay at the bed. You're welcome to stay for closed session.
Thinking when?
This guy's sticking around, isn't he?
Yeah, he just wanted for a phone call.
Monte, this is ready.
I gotta get some things shut down and turned off, and it'll be just...
Once when you're ready.
Okay. Okay, yep, yep. So let's see here.